Changes anybody wants to make? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I believe we did have a supplemental item I just wanted to note.
What's on the consent agenda? Okay, we do have one item to add to the consent agenda, item, which will be item D, adoption of a resolution declaring uh the necessity to acquire easements for property on East First Street for the Dalles Riverfront Access Project. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilor Randall and seconded by Councilor Ring to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item five is a report from the Dalles Area Chamber of Commerce. Please introduce yourself, although everybody knows who you are.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor and staff. Lisa Farquharson with the Dalles Area Chamber, just in case. This is our time that we do our annual report every year for our tourism contract. You've seen me a little bit the last few weeks with the RFP process, but this is going to give you a summary of our year so far, which is almost coming to an end in June 30th for our fiscal year that we operated as a tourism contract. You have before you a very large report with lots of data, but I decided just to do some highlights for you and pull it out so that you guys can see kind of a summary of the things that we really tried to highlight and some of those effects and the ROI on some of the impacts we did for the investments. We really, we always try to have a strategy in place for tourism and this year was definitely increase the visitor spending, not necessarily the visitors themselves, because if we can have a more impactful visitor, we have a smaller footprint, but a better ROI on our investment on those pieces. So we really utilized a few different things this year is increasing the visibility, driving the real-time visitor conversions and putting the Dalles, of course, on the map as the destination and not just to pass through. That's been our continued goal over the last eight years. Instead of the visit the Dalles, it's explore the Dalles on purpose. So one of the major campaigns that we did was with K E T U. We did this partnership last year and last year it cost us quite a bit more because we created every video for nine different businesses and they aired it on two of their spotlight programs AM in the AM morning and the afternoon show. So we use that and then there was a campaign and ad promoting all through the week to watch and see, explore the Dalles. We did that last year. This year we were able just to take those nine same segments and edit them, kind of spruce them up a little bit with already existing raw footage that we had and then do that investment. It was 12,500. If you remember, it was probably about $22,000, $25,000 last year for us to do that initial investment. It ended up with 272,000 impressions and we featured again nine businesses in the Dalles, helping them to tell their story and doing that story brand and then conversion to website and trip planning. So we did that and then we also really targeted in Datify. This is the data system that we use to see how many visitors we have, who they are, how much they spend, what kind of a visitor they are, how are they finding us and all those different details. There's so much data out there, but we're kind of loving it. So we used some targeting campaign last, I believe, fall. And through that, there was geo-fenced digital ads. This allowed us to put different formats and they were a little GIF, so they moved and had language coming across it, so it wasn't just a stagnant one. And they helped us create nine different sizes and stuff and then we got to keep those. But we did this and we were able to do that and let me just second, I'll find my number for you. We did those and then we really made sure we targeted not just Portland, Seattle, Tri-Cities, Spokane and Bend, which we've always done, but we targeted outside areas that we saw were being reflected of coming and visiting us during the time of, through all the different campaigns and Datify. So what we ended up with, and just a second, I will have that number for you. We ended up with 30,000 impressions from all of those ads. It's a little over a month long and with that, we were able to track who came from those impressions, who stayed and who spent money, which is a little scary that we can do all of that, but we did. And so I believe that estimated total spend from those ag-exposed visitors was $7.2 million. So we spent, I believe it was about $5,000 for the total campaign for a month long, but we were able to return to our community an investment of $7.2 million from our tourism visitors. So that is what we did there. The other thing that we track with Datify is how many visitors we had the previous year compared to this year. So this year, right now, July to April, because it goes back one month for verified data, we tracked 292,753 visitors. This is who we're tracking. It's not our total visitors, but we're able to track these. And that total estimated spending for them, based on the average that is set by Travel Oregon for our region, was $75,848,027. So what we did discover is that we had 18,240 more visitors than we did the same period, same period that we did last year. And that increase was $4,722,000 just for the increase. So these are things that we're looking at and tracking for you to let you know what your dollars are doing, where they're reaching and how they're impacting our community. Those are just a brief overview of some of those things that we've done. We're continuing to improve our website by adding itineraries, different things, making sure we're promoting the events. The other things that we have done is making sure that we're boosting and making sure our big events are getting out there on digital calendars all over the Northwest. So we have about 30 that we're constantly grabbing the events from our community and putting them on there so that these are accessible by anybody looking at their normal routine festival calendars, running calendars and all of that. We want to make sure that the Dalles is present, so that is something my team is doing all the time. Just a quick synopsis of visitor services and our local impact. We had 2,800 walk-in visitors, which is great because everybody has gone digital, but we still had 2,800 visitors come into our visitor lobby and ask us what is there to do in the Dalles. We love those ones the most because we get that direct person-to-person connection and be able to tell them what is happening right here at the moment. We gave out over 8,000 brochures and maps, distributed through different visitor centers, events, welcome packets, all of those things. We even had our top states, of course, was Oregon, the closest, Washington, California, Idaho and Arizona, but our top countries were Canada, UK and Fiji. And so then we have ongoing programs, Sensational Charm Trail, the Token Wall, which has those wooden token coupons. We'll be beefing that up again this next year. And then also we're doing lots of welcome bags for groups, tournaments and tours. Right now we are working on welcome bags for the Ted Walker Memorial Swim Meet, which is the 21st, the Little League Great Big Huge Playoffs, which is the 21st, and then Ride the Gorge, which is a huge ride that goes all the way and ends at the Discovery Center, which is the 21st. And so we're working on notifying all of our restaurants and everything to make sure that, hey, you might want to beef up your supplies and your staffing as those people will all be coming, but we'll be doing welcome bags for all three of those groups. We've even worked a deal for Ride the Gorge. They have a identifying brace bracelet that says Explore the Dalles and Ride the Gorge 2025. They show that in the businesses we've already pre-arranged and they get a discount so that we encourage them to leave the Discovery Center and come into our downtown. So we're working really hard on all those different parts and pieces. And then we, of course, are still hosting the fam tours, familiarization tours, for those who are not with, don't know that term. It is basically trying to woo or get them to fall in love with the Dalles and come and write an article, experience our community and then go back and publish what they thought was really great. We're doing several of those with Travel Oregon and our Hood Gorge Region, which helps us because we're not footing the bill all the way up front for those, just a few things on the backend. And we've had some really good Instagram influencers come. Our most favorite was Corey, who is wheelchair-bound and he is a part of the Wheels of Oregon, doing all kinds, Wheels of the World, that's doing all kinds of different fam tours to see how accessible each community is for someone who is in a wheelchair. And we're working with Wheels of the World. We've already had nine businesses assessed what their accessibility is like and that was at the, Travel Oregon paid for that, for our community. And then they'll come back and analyze those businesses and tell them different steps on how to be more accessible. But Corey had fun going to all of these different places and then writing about the experience that he had. Great picture of him going down our Riverfront Trail, having fun with the dinosaurs in the Discovery Center. And this is a probably 30 to 40-year-old gentleman that is, I don't know if he's paralyzed from the neck down, but he is definitely in a wheelchair. He has a really cool wheelchair. But this was some of the things that we're doing is not just, we're not just a community for outdoor recreation, we're not just our history, we're not just that, but we're also accessible for those who might not think about traveling because they're cautious or afraid what's on the other end. So we're trying to also work with Travel Oregon on that piece of it. We obviously, we earned some media stories this year. We worked with a few on our own. Winner escapes and spend a day in the Dalles with Willamette Week. We earned the top towns where history is still happening now with True West Magazine. Last year we were in the top 10 True West cities. And then we also Frontier Unlimited TV, it filmed three episodes here that actually got awards and then those are being broadcasted on over 30 different channels across the United States. So then our key partnerships that we always work with is Travel Oregon, Travel Portland, CGTA, the Hood Gorge Region, our own community. And then one of the things we want to make sure that you guys know about is there's a portion of our budget that goes out for event grant marketing support and we dedicate $30,000 every year to go back to our businesses to help them with the marketing of their own events. And this year we were able to award 15 of those grants at $2,000 each to local businesses who are putting events on. Then we also were in 20-plus different publications, whether it was ads, stories, mentions and all of those different things across the Northwest and the United States this year. So closing, or do I have questions first? I have a closing statement, but do you have questions?
Sure. Councilor Runyon.
This is a lot of paper.
I know. That's why I summarized it for you.
So under number two, marketing objectives, bullet point eight, focus in the Portland, Seattle, Central Oregon, Eastern Oregon, Tri-Cities and Spokane markets, which is continued on item three on the next page, broken down a little more. Portland Metro, Vancouver, Washington, Seattle Tacoma, Washington, Central Oregon Sisters, Redmond Bend, Eastern Oregon and Washington, Hermiston in parentheses with Pendleton, La Grande, Tri-Cities, Yakima Valley and Spokane. Is that any different than you've done any other years or focus on something additional?
Okay. So we, this is a part of a continued contract and we did that, but we've done a little bit more intentional using the digital marketing, some of that. The geo-fencing allows us to really hit those highlights. Instead of when we're picking some boosting or we're picking publications, we really targeted these with that digital campaign that we did with Datify. We're also doing a present one. I don't have numbers yet. Bicostal does something very similar with that, digital geo-fencing. So we picked some of these same ones, so we'll be able to target. We're getting in and targeting those a little bit more aggressive, but it is pretty close to the same list of what we did last year.
And under, on the first page, back to number three, targeted audience, under, I think the sixth bullet point, under functional, the line independent of mind and are the least likely to worry about what others might think. What are your thoughts about that as your, part of your target audience? It's on the first page, just under number three, sixth bullet point.
Under functional?
Independent. Functional, independent of mind and are the least likely to worry about what others might think. I just needed some more explanation on that.
So you'll find that those independent exploring people really will just go out and try anything. They'll come, they don't have to have a guided tour, they don't have to be explained, they don't need an itinerary. They're coming to do things, whether the town is busy, whether the town has this, whether they're coming to do an intentional experience. And those are some of the ones that we want because I don't need to have a certain store open at a certain time. They're coming to do an experience that they've already determined that they want to do. So of course we want those independent people. There are explorers, if you think about that, and the explorers fit well in our community so that they can either explore the history, the wine and beer, the hard spirit industry, or the outdoor recreation, or our attractions. They're looking for that. They don't need to be told that we have all those, they will discover them. And we like them because they ended up having a great experience while they're here and they tell a lot of people too.
So, you know, I always say that, and we've all read everything, but the public not necessarily has seen a lot of it. So I just like to go through a couple of things. One, under measurable outcomes, there's a choice there of, under number nine, goals and objectives, the very last line, quarterly slash annually. I for one would like to see a quarterly report of a shorter duration of what has happened for that period of time. That's just me. It's up to the council or up to the city manager to figure that out.
So city manager can remind us as to what the new contract says about the chamber appearing before the council.
So actually, our existing contract and the contract going forward has an annual report typically around this time of year, not as late as June, but I don't think that's anybody's fault in particular. It might be, might be more on the city if anything else. And then we have a provision in the contract that allows us to request quarterly reports or up to quarterly reports. You know, one of the things that's challenging, and I'm just speaking as the city manager here, but one of the things that's challenging for us and staff is making sure that our agendas are manageable, that we're getting through all the different items that we need to, that we're not here terribly often till.
Just, just putting it out on the table is something of interest if we have time. Okay. The other thing is that I noticed here, I put a note on, in section 10, under personnel, under the second section on that page, marketing and promotions. And this would be the, the last part of the sentence on the fourth bullet. This is better photo albums and a better video capacity and storage. Can you tell me about that? I mean, what was wrong with what you did last year? What did you like? What did you improve upon?
So we're always looking for new images for our library because then we need updated images, whether, because if, if you go downtown, things have changed. Either it could be the facade, it could be the business, it could be a location of a business. So we're always trying to update our image library so that when we use it for social media, when we use it for webs, when we use it for stories, that we have an updated one. So we're always doing those things. So we've made it a priority so that we can go out and take those photos. And then we're actually looking at something that contract, but we're also working with photographers in our region saying, hey, can we be using this photo? And some of them just give us full permission without a cost. Most of them have a cost because they put time and effort into those photos. So we're working with those so that we can have better images in that. So we're working with those so that we can have better images in that library. We have a different cloud storage, so we're allowed to put more images in there and not be told your storage is almost empty. So we're working on those different aspects. You know, you've got so many in there, but then you go through and take out the old. But sometimes you want to get rid of too much old because need to bring those back and remind people where we were and what we're from. So those are some of the tactics that we're doing on that.
That's all I've got.
Okay. Any other questions?
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor, just a comment. And this is just during the presentation for the Ride the Gorge event. Have you reached out to Jessica with the link, public transit system?
No, because most of them have arranged drivers and their bikes.
Just, yeah, just.
But that's an idea. I'll, I'll reach out and let her know. Plus we'll have the ballpark going and the swim meet going. So there will be lots of people who need transportation around. So I'll talk to Jess, that is a good idea. Thank you.
I have a couple.
Go, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Your closing statement, now two quick questions. One, how many years have we been with Datafy? Datafy, if you said that, I missed it.
This is our, end of our second year. We go on to one more year, it will be our third of our contract.
Is it too early to tell what you're going to do for the contract that's expired?
We'll probably renew. It makes so much sense. We're actually going to be doing more campaigns with them this year than we did last year because their campaigns, we can track them. So we can see if those dollars are actually doing something. And so to me, it just makes its logic. And so it will be, anytime we can track where our dollars are going, it just makes sense so that we can really see if it's impactful or not. Much, much easier to track than an ad in a magazine. And just so you know, our ads, we've changed our approach on that. We still do full page ads, but it's called an editorial. I think we approached that last year was our new thing. So we tell a story about the Dells and the fun things to do. So when you look at this ad, it looks like it's a part of the magazine stories rather than a picture. And then it has our contact information. And so we slide that into a publication. So it looks like it's a part of it, like they featured the Dells as a story, but it's really an ad that we bought for a full page.
Yeah, you seem to be very happy with them. And my last question is, have you started advertising for the tourism director yet?
It, it hit WorkSource just today. I couldn't do anything beforehand, so I needed board approval on everything. So yes, it went to WorkSource today and we'll be putting it out everywhere.
Okay, great. Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much.
I'm not done yet. Right? I make it, I'll make it quick. So just to remember, tourism is a lifeline. It's economic development. These dollars are flowing directly to our local hotels, restaurants, shops, attractions and service providers. Tourism is a vital part of our community. It brought in over $75 million this last year. It's supported jobs, filled hotel rooms, fed our downtown and gave thousands of visitors a reason to come back. With the continued support of the Dow City Council, we will keep elevating the momentum. With smart data, strong partnerships and strategic marketing, we'll ensure the Dells remains a leading destination as much as we can in the gorge. Thank you for believing in the work we do and helping us make the Dells a place people don't just pass through, they stay, spend and remember. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a nice closing statement. Okay. Item six is audience participation during this portion of the meeting. Anyone may speak on any subject which is not later appear on the agenda. Up to three minutes per person will be allowed. Citizens are encouraged to ask questions with the understanding that the city can either answer the question tonight or refer that question to the appropriate staff member, who will get back to you within a reasonable amount of time. If response by the city is requested, the speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. The issue may appear on a future meeting agenda for city council consideration. Tonight, we have four people signed up. First is Tim Schechtel. Hi, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tim Schechtel. I live at 3511 Sandlin Road. I'm a business owner downtown. So I want to ask, reveal some information that I've discovered lately and then ask some questions of the board. I'm concerned about a surveillance system that is now being marketed across the United States by a company called Flock Surveillance Systems. When a system like this is installed, it's a system of, of video cameras. And they're installed in, it can be installed in neighborhoods, shopping centers, downtown core areas, anywhere that you can use a camera. It's similar to the camera systems that have been in, in effect or in use at border crossings for, you know, for many years. But this, the advanced high technology and the capability of a system like this is almost staggering. So anyone with knowledge of how to use this or has a subscription to this can access all the information. So the, the, it tracks license plate numbers. And it can be shared without permission across agencies, state and federal or international, whatever, whoever's going to buy that information is available to them. I have information that people who have information about this are exercising that municipalities should really exercise caution. You, towns have been approached. Skamania County has installed a system like this. A lot of citizens in that county are up in arms about that. They installed it without public comment. And I'm just asking if, if, if you have been approached or any of our law enforcement has been approached that they will make that public and have encouraged public discussion before any decision is made.
Amy, will you stop the clock, please?
Pardon me?
I'm asking her to stop the clock because you got forty-nine, forty-eight. Can you back it up? Okay, we'll give you some free time.
Okay. I'll be quick, I'll be quick.
Oh, I'm not asking you to, I'm just, I wanted to respond to what you just said.
Okay.
Okay. And the name of the company is Flock, F L O C K?
Flock Security Systems.
Security system, okay. If it, we'll pass the word around and if anybody, I haven't heard anything about it, but if anybody has, our city manager will get back to you, okay?
Appreciate that very much.
Right. Start it, give him about 10 seconds.
Okay. So I'm very concerned about the possible misuses of this. Given what's happened, like in Washington DC with our social security information, we have no idea how that's going to shake out. I would say this is something that could interface with that type of breach. It would be highly usable for that. And I think local leadership should be forthright. If you are approached by their sales agents, Skamania County, as far as I know, has a system installed and people want it removed. So anyway, I think it's a violation and intrusion of our privacy rights. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I can lean right into that one.
Sure, go ahead.
Like, so we've, there was one additional correspondence we received just earlier today about Flock and some of the same concern that you've expressed. And so I checked in with the leadership team here that we have with the city. And we have had, or have been approached by representatives from, from Flock. But working with the chief of police here, there was no intent to move forward with, with such a program. I don't know when that contact occurred and I can dig in more into that, but just want to be forthright in what we've done today.
Really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Judy Merrill. Please, please, you can see the clock, right?
Okay, I gotta hurry up. Okay. So, thank you, everybody. First of all, I want to thank the city for the trees, the trash cans with the beautiful murals on them and the murals in themselves throughout town. And in particular, the plants on the corner of Trevitt, at the bottom of Trevitt, all those beautiful plants, I pass by that all the time. So thank you.
You can thank our beautification committee for most of that, but.
No, it's great.
Sorry, I just used up three seconds.
As a bicycle rider, human powered and a pedestrian, both local and, and local tourist, I'd like to share my increased concern for safety in both our downtown corridor, on sidewalks and streets for both users and pedestrians, regarding the increased usage of bicycle scooters, roller skating, skateboarders, and there's probably more examples, both non-electric, human powered and electric. Over the past few months, I have begun talking with people, users and non-users, along with officials regarding the subject with the goal for safety for all. I began talking with the chief and police chief, Tom Worthy, on June 2nd, followed with Cindy of the Traffic and Safety Commission on the 4th of this month. And I'm also going to be attending the Zoom meeting on sick, on June 9th. I discussed the bikes, et cetera, and on downtown sidewalks. She had shared with me that Russ Brown had recently made a reference to Cindy. He was not able to attend the meeting prior to last month's Traffic and Safety Commission meeting, since he would not be in attendance. He has, he also has concerns and would like to see, it would like not to see bikes and electric bikes, et cetera, on downtown city sidewalks. This was minimally discussed and would be brought up at the next meeting for further discussion. I also have spent over the last couple of months regard, and doing research, both in the gorge and also at the state levels and with ODOT and the Oregon Bike Laws or City Ordinances and the fifth edition of the Oregon Bicycle Manual. What I would like to see is a, make a recommendation for the city of the Dells to consider and study the subject with a goal of developing a city ordinance specifically for the downtown quarter of, on the sidewalks. In addition, just regular bicycle operating rules, both non-electric and electric within the city's limits. The goal, safety for all, be outdoors, be healthy and be happy and have fun.
Thank you very much.
Bob Kenyon. Bob Kenyon, 800 Liberty here in the Dells. I'm here to, to thank the city and to report about the, the, a week ago, we had a music festival, the Grand Dells Music Festival. It was a grand success and better than anybody even probably expected. Jonathan from the, from Shannon's Ice Cream put an enormous amount of work into this. I know the city contributed, the Chamber of Commerce, this culture, I don't know too much about it, but the cultural deal, whatever that is, the money. And some of us backed it, not just in time, but in backing. And it was a grand success. And so I'm referring to it with, with Jonathan, I'm referring to it as the first annual, the Grand Dells Music Festival. We're on the map. People that, that go to these music festivals are now coming from one, going to another. And the Dells got onto it. And the Granada Theater benefited immensely from this. The place was packed two nights in a row. And I don't know, out of everybody here in the room, I don't know how many people had, had an opportunity to, to attend. It's, it's ironic, no matter what Jonathan did, no matter what the chamber does, when you, you, you put out all this information and still, all this week, there's people that didn't know it went on. It's quite, and you just can't get to everybody. So actually, in a way, that's an optimistic point because if you haven't gotten to everybody and they hear about it. So that's why I'm referring to it with Jonathan as the first annual. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Finally, Chip Wood.
Chip Wood, 415 West 15th Street. I'd like to talk about ICE and their effects that they've had on our nation this year and what we've witnessed in LA and maybe the potential effects on our community. ICE is out causing terror and fear among communities nationwide. And I can only expect that it's going to end up here at some point with our agricultural industry. And I know that both Chief Worthy and Lane, or Sheriff McGill have reached out to our agriculture community and Hispanic community and are going to follow the laws, the same, the Oregon laws of not helping ICE. But at the same time, if we have peaceful protesters trying to protest ICE presence here, will our local officials have our backs? People are getting detained by ICE for hours and then released. And that's just more fear mongering. All this is happening without due process. They're coming in without due process, making wide sweeps. And this could have a very devastating effect on our economy. You could see, I mean, things that I never thought would imagine six months ago. I mean, now I can imagine a whole crop of cherries rotten on the trees. And, and these are very real situations that could happen in our community. And I would like to start this conversation, encouraging our city council to be proactive in peaceful demonstrations opposing ICE. And even one idea could be that our emergency service alert that we get on our phones for fires or floods or whatever could be used for, to alert people that, you know, that ICE is in this vicinity and let us be able to come together in a larger group to try to stop their actions in our community. This is important. We are seeing, you know, we just pledged allegiance to the flag, liberty and justice for all. I mean, that means everybody. And people who are being arrested or detained by ICE are not having liberty and justice. And I think it's really important that as a community, we get behind this. This will escalate. And I'm not saying it's going to escalate in our community, but it's going to continue to escalate, escalate in the nation.
You got 10 seconds.
I know, I see it. And anyway, it, I just want people to be proactive about it in a peaceful way.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's it for audience participation. Item seven is the city manager's report. Mr. Klebs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a few for you this evening. Tonight, I would like to introduce James, our new transportation manager, who's in the back right of the audience. If you could put your hand up or stand up is even better. James is joining us from ODOT and is filling the shoes of David Mills, who has been promoted to the Deputy Public Works position. Thank you both for stepping up. Thank you Dale, as the new Public Works Director, for pulling together such a good team. And I just wanted to introduce James to all of you this evening. Thanks for being here.
Welcome aboard and congratulations on your promotion. David.
I also wanted to let the council know that, or remind the council actually, that several years ago, the city opted in and voluntarily participates in wastewater testing for viral traces of COVID-19, RSV and the flu. This has been since 2020. This testing is consistent with the mission of our wastewater treatment plan and protecting public health and the environment. And we benefit from this information and the timely awareness for healthcare response and, and improving that service that this testing provides. I wanted to make sure and give this reminder to council and let them know as North Central Public Health will be rolling out a community respiratory risk rating website in the fall of this year. And this introduction of this new dashboard will convey some of this information to our partners and to the community. And we intend to add some of this information to our September utility bill. And wanted to let you know that was coming down the pipeline. Late last week, I also appeared on KODL. We also pulled together a meeting with Columbia Gorge Humane Society, Wasco County, city representatives and staff and. city representatives and staff, and representatives from the different veterinary offices that we have in this community to continue our discussion around the updating, the process to update our dog ordinance. And just a final reminder that I will be on vacation next week. I will have my cellphone with me, but try not to use it.
Oh, Council McLaughlin has joined us. We'll let you lead off with council reports. Counselor.
My tardiness was caused by Colonel Wright Elementary Promotion Ceremony for my two grandchildren, so sorry, I was a little late. I'm not going to include anything in my report for this week.
Counsel Ring.
I'm also not going to have anything for my report this week, but I too will be gone next week at my son's graduation from Army Basic Training.
Okay, we appreciate his service. Counsel Randall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item. On June 3rd, I attended the meeting of the Local Public Safety Coordinating Committee, also known as Lipstick, where we just basically received some status updates of some grant applications. That's it.
Counsel Runyon.
Just one thing which we all attended, a special meeting a week ago, held for less than three and a half hours.
Yeah.
I thought that's worthy of mentioning. And we were all here for that. It was an extra city council meeting. I want to make note of something that's happening in our community on June 18th, which is a Wednesday, at approximately 2:00, but I would advise you to be early. The Alaska Airlines-sponsored Fallen Soldiers Kart is on its way from, will be on its way from Seattle to Boise. And these carts are red, white and blue, et cetera, and whatever town they are going to be destined for usually have an emblem or something within that denotes that location. And what they are used for by all airlines at a particular location is for the disembarking of a veteran or active military that has passed away. And we were lucky last year to have a similar trip stop here. I've arranged for them to stop again at the Oregon Veterans Home. I'm providing lunch, so come on up. But they expect to be at the Veterans Home somewhere around 2:00. And it might be a few minutes earlier or later, but the community is invited. It's quite a deal. They do a special flag presentation while they're there at the Veterans Home and the residents really enjoy it, so, but everybody's invited.
Thank you. As far as my report goes, on June the 4th, I had the pleasure of meeting two newly-elected members of the District 21 School Board. The following day, on June the 5th, I traveled to Hood River and had a nice meeting with the mayor of Hood River, Paul Blackburn. On June the 6th, I helped celebrate Yard of the Month for Taylor and Kelsey Alzheimer, who live on 3rd Street and have a beautiful yard, Yard of the Month. And then yesterday, I attended a, make that Saturday, I attended a memorial service for community icon Carl Verkuteren, who passed away about a week ago. The memorial service was held at the Zion Lutheran Church. Item nine is the consent agenda. Items of a routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the city council to spend its time and energy on the important items and issues. Any councilor may request that an item be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the action items section. Tonight, we have four items on the consent agenda. We added one tonight. First is a resolution concurring with my appointments of Russ Brown, Mike Hillkeny, Michael Holleran and Jim Schweinoff to the Traffic Safety Commission. Second is Wasco County Multi-Jurisdiction National Hazard Mitigation Plan to adopt, adoption of, I should say. Third is authorization of expenditures for the 2025 city's street chip seal project. is a resolution to acquire easements for property abutting first, East 1st Street for our riverfront access project. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended with item D.
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Counsel Ring and seconded by Counsel Randall to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10A is a public hearing. This is a public hearing to receive testimony on the proposed use of the state shared revenue distributions to the city for the 2025-26 fiscal year. Now is the time scheduled for a public hearing for the city council to receive public testimony as I just described. Public hearings are required by Oregon law and certain rules apply. First, a staff report will be presented. Next, I will ask the council if it has any questions for the staff. After those questions, I will open the public testimony portion of the hearing. Any person may testify in support of and opposition to, or in any other way directly related to the approved budget adoption. Anyone offering in-person testimony must wait to be recognized and approach the microphone, provide their name and mailing address and then testify. Anyone offering virtual testimony must raise their hand on Zoom, wait to be recognized, provide their name and mailing address and then testify. For all interested persons are afforded an opportunity to testify. After all interested persons are afforded an opportunity to testify, I will close the public hearing portion of the hearing. Finally, the city council will then deliberate and I will accept motions. These are the rules. Are there any questions?
The public hearing on the proposed use of state shared revenue distributions is now open. May we please have the staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. State revenue sharing law, ORS 221.770, requires cities to pass a resolution each year stating that they elect to receive state revenue sharing money during the next fiscal year. There are two steps to this process. The first is for the, before the Budget Committee, which has been completed, to consider the possible use of this shared revenue. And then again, before city council on the proposed uses of the revenue. Traditionally, we've used and allocated our state revenue sharing funds to support activities in the general fund and the street fund. As I mentioned, we had a Budget Committee meeting on May 5th where this was executed and they voted to recommend to the council that they continue to, we should continue to use those funds to support the street fund and the general fund in the upcoming fiscal year 25-26 budget. This is a public hearing this evening and included in your packet is Resolution 25-023 describing as such, and we are asking you to move to adopt said resolution as presented. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, we're not deliberating or commenting, we're just asking questions. Does anybody on the council have a question for the city manager?
Does anyone from the public wish to testify in support of and opposition to, or in any other way, directly related to the proposed use of state shared revenues for up to three Seeing no one, we'll move on. The public testimony portion of this hearing is now closed. Does the council feel it has enough information to make a decision? If so, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 25-023, a resolution declaring the city of the DOWS election to receive state revenues for fiscal year 2025-2026.
McLaughlin will second.
It's been moved by Counsel Runyon and seconded by Counsel McLaughlin to adopt the resolution declaring our election to receive state shared revenues for the next fiscal year. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item 10B. Now is the time scheduled for a public hearing for the city council to receive public testimony concerning the adoption of the approved budget for the city's 2025-2026 fiscal year. Public hearings are required by Oregon law and certain rules apply. First, a staff report will be presented. Next, I will ask the council if it has any questions for the staff. After those questions, I will open the public testimony portion of the hearing. Any person may testify in support of and opposition to, or in any other way directly related to the approved budgets adoption. Anyone offering in-person testimony must wait to be recognized, then approach the microphone, provide their name and mailing address and then testify. Anyone offering virtual testimony must raise their hand on Zoom, wait to be recognized, provide their name and mailing address, then testify. For all interested persons are afforded an opportunity to testify, I will close the public hearing testimony, I will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Finally, the council will then deliberate and I will accept motions. These are the rules. Are there any questions? The public hearing on the approved budget for the 2025-26 fiscal year is now open. May we please have the staff report?
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I noted previously, the city budget committee reviewed the proposed budget on May 5th and May 6th of this year, and they approved the budget with changes at the conclusion of the meeting on May 6th. There's a similar process here to hold a public hearing to approve the budget at tonight's meeting. And the Oregon budget law allows the governing body here tonight, prior to its adoption, to make changes if needed to a fund approved by the budget committee in amounts, in amounts up to $5,000 or 10% of the operating portion of that particular fund, whichever is greater. At this time, there have been some minor changes to the budget approved by the city of the DOWS Budget Committee. As the council who participated in that meeting may recall, we made some significant adjustments to the police department fund to support our 911 CAD RMS project. As, and connected to that, we have a guiding fiscal policy to maintain 10% contingency. And so we had to make some adjustments to the general fund contingency and the unappropriated ending fund balance to stay in alignment with that guiding fiscal policy. But other than that, there are no other changes to the budget approved or approved by the budget committee. One thing I noted last week at the city council meeting on June 2nd was that with the approval of the Contract for Tourism Services Promotion with the DOWS Area Chamber of Commerce, there is a change there. We had allocated $450,000 for that contract. The cost of the contract moving forward came in at $465,000. As such, in the tourism fund, there'll be an adjustment to the detail provided within. Well, we will increase the amount to stay in alignment with that contract and decrease the amount in what we've labeled tourism projects. But because the tourism fund as a whole accounts for all that, there's no actual changes to the beginning and ending fund balance numbers with that fund. It's more associated with the detail, the level of detail that we provide you within that fund. So there's no formal change there. Other than that, I just wanted to note that for the minutes. And tonight, we're looking to have you adopt Resolution Number 25-024, adopting the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget for the city of the DOWS. I think the only other thing I'll note is just a little bit of detail that the operating portion of our budget includes personnel, materials and services and capital outlay categories, but does not include inter-fund transfers, contingency or other unappropriated amounts. And I think with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the city manager?
Just a thought here about the fact that we've had some, several personnel changes over the last month or two, and new people coming in may be at different pay scales, salaries may be higher. Are we equipped to handle that if that occurs, rather than at the same salary the individual left at?
Yeah, so on a case-by-case basis, if those, if those job duties change or evolve as a review of a particular position, or as part of a compensation study we may do, that may come to light. And, you know, if there are a change, if a change is needed kind of mid-cycle, you know, we'll come back to council for that approval and authorization. But it is one of the reasons why, you know, on a recurring basis, on some reasonable timeline, we go and we pull some of that compensation data to help guide the salary pay scales that we have for the two unions and our exempt staff. The goal there is to try and remain competitive from a recruitment and retention perspective. And if we consistently do that, coupled with annual COLA, Cost of Living Adjustment considerations, I hope or expect that it keeps us pretty in line. But if any other additional changes that are needed, as a position may change or evolve or those duties shift, we'll conduct that analysis independently and bring it back to council if needed.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Does anyone from the public wish to testify in support of and opposition to, or in any other way directly related to the approved budget for up to three minutes apiece? Anybody? Yes, ma'am? Yeah, please identify yourself and your address for the record.
Amy Kroll, 805 West 12th Street. I'd like to hear, if possible, more about the police budget in this year coming up and why it's the top receiver of the funds.
I'll just, I'll start off by saying, I don't, I'll let the city manager comment more, but it's not unusual at all for a police department to be the leading expenditure in any city budget. But with that, I'll turn it over to Matthew.
I think one of the big components this year is there's a very substantial project to upgrade what's called our CAD RMS system, which is computer-aided dispatch and the record management system. This is a project done in partnership with Wasco County and Mid-Columbia Fire and Rescue and the 911 Dispatch Center. In a nutshell, that software is incredibly old and dated and needs to be upgraded for its general usability, some more modern tools and functionality that can come with an updated software, and it's starting to run some support and maintenance risks. And so that was a very substantial portion in this budget cycle attributed to the police department, again, in partnership with Wasco County and the fire district. But Mr. Mayor Mays is also correct. I mean, that's, the police department, it's part of the general fund, is nearly always, you know, the most substantial piece of that.
Yeah, I want to just reflect in these times about where we spend our money reflects our values and there's a lot of things going on across the country that will not, the DOWS will not be untouched by. Hopefully, we stay safe as a community as you're interested in and continue to do that. And I think the accountability is really important, so thanks for answering my question.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the city council? Last call. The public testimony portion of this hearing is now closed. Does the city council feel it has enough information to make a decision? If so, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I have one more comment and my apologies if it is out of order. But I did want to note for the record that we did receive an application from the Oregon Food Bank as part of our local government granting program that was missed, unfortunately, in this process. It was an application, in essence, to assist them with some bird problems that they're having down at the facility, kind of a bird deterrent system. I did want to note that that application was received and my apologies to the Oregon Food Bank for not involving that in the full process. I also wanted to comment that I still stand by the recommendation that was, that I provided to the budget committee, but did, in all transparency, wanted to make that note as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask again, does the council feel it has enough information to make a decision?
Yep.
If so, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 25-024, adopting the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget for the city of the DOWS, making appropriations, authorizing expenditures, levying taxes and authorizing the city manager to take such action as necessary to carry out the adopted budget.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved by Counsel Ring and seconded by Counsel Runyon to adopt the resolution adopting the 2025-26 budget for the city. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. My compliments to the staff for putting this huge document together and for guiding us through the entire process, finance staff especially, and our city manager. Thank you. Item 10C. Now is the time specified for the city council to conduct the public hearing to consider the following matter. It's a petition for a right-of-way vacation, 77-26. the following matter. It's a petition for a right-of-way vacation 77-25, an application to vacate public right-of-way that rededicate and accept rededication of real property on Federal Street between East 1st Street and East 2nd Street for the Federal Street Plaza Project. Quasi-judicial hearings require the City Council to make decisions using a certain process comprising criteria, evidence, and specific findings. The substantive criteria upon which the City Council will base its decision in this matter are found in the staff report, the Dallas Municipal Code, Chapter 11.16, entitled "Street Vacations", and ORS 271.005 to 271.540. A public hearing is required by Oregon law, and certain rules apply. First and foremost, you must be recognized by me in order to speak and present, present testimony. When recognized by me, please proceed to the microphone and state your name and mailing address for the record, both of which are required by Oregon law. The hearing is also required by law to be recorded. Generally, the public hearing procedure is as follows. First, I will open the public hearing with a staff report. The purpose of the staff report is to further identify the applicable criteria of the case being considered and to provide background information about the application. Second, I will ask for testimony from any proponents, in other words, those in favor of the proposed vacation. Next, I will ask for testimony from any opponents, those who are not in favor of the proposed vacation. Finally, I'll ask for testimony from anyone else who wishes to offer relevant testimony or ask relevant questions. If any opponent testimony is submitted, and to honor the right of the rebuttal, I will then provide an opportunity to hear again, hear, hear again staff. To expedite the hearing, councillors may ask questions of persons as they testify. When this process has been concluded, I will close the public testimony portion of the hearing, and the City Council will deliberate toward a decision. These are the rules. Are there any questions? The public hearing is now open. May we please have the staff report?
Good evening, Mayor Mays, Councillors Joshua Chandler, Community Development Department. The next item for consideration is Special Ordinance Number 25606, which proposes to vacate and rededicate portions of the Federal Street right-of-way between East 1st and East 2nd Street to facilitate the Federal Street Plaza. This project was listed in the Vision Action Plan as a high priority. This project is envisioned as a, as a flexible pedestrian-oriented civic space in the heart of our downtown. It will support community events, expand outdoor gathering spaces, and encourage downtown reinvestment by replacing right-of-way with an attractive, functional public plaza. To support development of the Federal Street Plaza, the City Council adopted Resolution Number 24-020 in September 2024, which established an ad hoc committee to guide the planning efforts. Their work and input from the community resulted in an approved tentative plan of the plaza at the, approved at the April 28th City Council meeting. The site includes a city-owned lot that was created by a prior street vacation. This is the lot that houses the Transportation Building, along with adjoining rights-of-way on Federal Street, abutting the former Tony site, as well as the Craig's Building. To unify ownership of the project, the council voted on March 24th to initiate this formal street vacation process. So following that initiation, this was discussed with the city's internal site team, which is a pre-application process with our, our local agencies and our Public Works Department. And there was no objections, no objections were raised, but easements were, were recommended as something that we need to, to make sure that we follow through and, and ensure that they're recorded for the existing utilities. So under Oregon law, vacated right-of-ways distributed to abutting property owners, in this case, the city, the Urbanial Agency, and the owners of the Craig's Building, which is 2FB LLC. All parties have supported the plaza development efforts, and the abutting property owners have agreed to dedicate their shares and, of the vacated land to the city, ensuring that, that the city, this lot will be all-in-one ownership by the city. So looking at the findings of our, of the adoption process here, or the recommendation here, this vacation was initiated by council, which is considers, consistent with ORS and the Dallas Municipal Code, and allows governing bodies to pursue vacations in the public interest. Since council initiated the action, the statutory threshold is based on whether a majority of affected property owners object. In this case, no objections were received, and all parties were actually in support, as I mentioned. The city provided full and proper notice in accordance with ORS, including publication in the newspaper, physical postings on the site, and was listed on the city's website. No written objections or public comments were submitted to date. The proposal directly supports the goals of the comprehensive plan, including urban design and livability goals by enhancing pedestrian environment, economic development policies by improving infrastructure to support downtown revitalization, and open space and recreation goals. Vacation enables the city to consolidate this fragmented ownership into this, this public plaza, which I think people are relatively excited about. The vacation also preserves public utility access, as I mentioned. We will ensure that the utilities in the ground, there are, there are clear easements as needed going through the area. And ultimately, this public interest, it's, it's really enhanced, not diminished by anything here, giving away this, giving away this public land back to the city. And the plaza will serve as a, this central piece to our downtown area. And with that, staff recommends the adoption of Special Ordinance Number 25606. And in total, this budget implications here, the budget implications associated with the process include title, surveying, mapping, recording fees, and the amount not exceeding $15,000. So these costs are covered by the city's legal department, and there are sufficient budgetary resources allocated to facilitate this ordinance. And without, I can answer any questions.
Okay, well, wait on questions until after the public comments. Are, does anyone wish to testify in favor of the proposed vacation for up to three minutes? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, or hearing no one? Does anyone wish to testify in opposition to the proposed vacation for up to three minutes? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Again, no one has come forward. Does anyone wish to testify or ask questions on this matter for up to three minutes that is not in favor or in opposition? If so, please state your name and address for the Hearing and seeing no one? Do the councillors feel they have enough information to make a decision? If not, I would encourage you to ask the staff specific questions. Any questions for the staff? Is the council ready for deliberations? The public testimony and public hearing is now closed. Anybody? Counselor McLaughlin?
I can make a motion. I move to adopt Special Ordinance.
Hold, hold a second.
Oh. Ah, yes, it says by title only.
Would anybody like to have the city clerk read the ordinance in, in its entirety?
No.
I think that was unanimous. Please read the, the, read it by title only, the city clerk?
Special Ordinance Number 25-606, a special ordinance vacating a portion of public right-of-way, rededicating and accepting the rededication of real property on Federal Street between East 1st Street and East 2nd Street for the Federal Street Plaza Project.
Counselor McLaughlin?
I move to adopt Special Ordinance Number 25-606, which approves the petition for public right-of-way vacation application number 77-25, to vacate a portion of public right-of-way, rededicating and accepting the rededication of real property on Federal Street between East 1st Street and East 2nd Street for the Federal Street Plaza Project, based upon the finding of fact and conclusions of law set forth in the Agenda Staff Report, by title only, as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Counselor McLaughlin and seconded by Counselor Randall to adopt the Special Ordinance that vacates a portion of the public right-of-way on Federal Street for the Federal Street Plaza Project. Is there any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Item 10D.
10B or D?
D.
Yeah, okay.
Now is the time for the City Council to conduct a public hearing to consider the following matter. Petition for right-of-way vacation 76-25, an application to vacate a portion of the public right-of-way near the intersection of Columbia Road and Steelhead Way. Quasi-judicial hearings require the City Council to make decisions using a certain process comprising criteria, evidence, and specific findings. The substantive criteria upon which the City Council will base its decision in this matter are found in the staff report, the Dallas Municipal Code, Chapter 11.16, entitled "Street Vacations", and ORS 271.005 to 271.540. A public hearing is required by Oregon law, and certain rules apply. First and foremost, you must be recognized by me in order to speak and present testimony. When recognized by me, please proceed to the microphone and state your name and mailing address for the record, both of which are required by Oregon law. The hearing is also required by law to be recorded. Generally, the public hearing procedure is as follows. First, I will open the public hearing with a staff report. The purpose of the staff report is to further identify the applicable criteria of the case being considered and to provide background information about the application. After the staff report, we will hear from the applicant, if there are, if they are present to, and wish to testify. Next, I'll ask for testimony from any proponents, in other words, those who are in favor of the proposed vacation. Fourth, I will ask for testimony from any opponents, in other words, those who are, who are not in favor of the proposed vacation. Finally, I will ask for testimony from anyone else who wishes to offer relevant testimony or ask relevant questions. If any opponent testimony is submitted, and to honor the right of the rebuttal, I will then provide an opportunity to hear again from the applicant. To expedite the hearing, councillors may ask questions of persons as they testify. When this process has been concluded, I will close the public hearing portion of the hearing, and the City Council will deliberate toward a decision. These are the rules. Are there any questions? Public hearing is now open. May we please have a staff report?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Mays, councillors. The next item for consideration is Special Ordinance Number 25-607, which is a request to vacate a den and segment of public right-of-way located near the intersection of Columbia Road and Steelhead Way in the city's port area. The request was submitted by Corbin Consulting Engineers on behalf of Design LLC or Google, which owns the surrounding parcels. We actually have a couple members, a couple reps from their team that are able to answer some questions after I final, after I finish everything up with my presentation. The vacation area is approximately 272 and a half feet long by 40 feet wide. It's fully enclosed on three sides by existing Google-owned property, kind of forming a de facto extension of their campus, if you will, when this is all said and done. The applicant proposes to incorporate this section of unused right-of-way into the larger development site to construct a secured access gate and turnaround area for truck traffic. This will shift freight movement on the public street and onto this private property, where queuing and circulation can be more effectively managed within this campus footprint. So this request satisfies the requirements of ORS and the Dallas Municipal Code, including the dismissal of a position, a petition signed by all abutting property owners, and more than 92% of property owners within the defined area, which is, you know, to move forward, you need to have at least two-thirds of that number. So they actually had 92%, so far exceeding the amount that are needed. A public notice similar to this other was included, provided in the newspaper. It was posted twice, similar to the other, before this meeting, posted onsite as well as on the city's website. No public comments or objections were received during this notice period. So this proposal is consistent with the city's transportation system plan, which prioritizes efficient circulation and safety in industrial areas. The right-of-way is currently improved, but does not serve through traffic and does not provide critical access to other properties. From a land use and public infrastructure perspective, vacation allows for more efficient site design, reduces industrial traffic on, on public streets, and supports ongoing employment and capital investment. It also helps ensure the truck queuing, loading, and circulation takes place within a secured site, which reduces impact on nearby businesses, because there has been some backing up of trucks that we've ever, we've heard some complaints in, in the past year or so on that. So this will basically move all that queuing and turnaround onto the property itself and off of the right-of-way. So existing public and franchise utilities within the area will be protected through the establishment or retention of easements. The proposed vacation does not impede access, does not limit utility function, and results in no net loss of public benefit. Rather, it resolves a redemptive right-of-way issue and consolidates property for better land use outcomes. So for these reasons, staff recommends adoption of Special Ordinance Number 25-607. Budget implications with this fairly minor. This is basically staff time and printing. If the application is approved, the applicant will be required to pay all associated mapping, recording, and filing fees with Wasco County. All incidental fees are covered on, in the general fund through the Community Development Department, and there is sufficient budgetary resources allocated to facilitate the Special Ordinance adoption. Thank you.
Is the applicant here? And if so, do you wish to testify? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Darren Ekman with AKS Engineering and Forestry, 3775 crates way, the Dallas, Oregon, representing the client or applicant.
This is Sprout Patel. I am representing the client, Design LLC, i.e. Google, located at 4200 Columbia Road.
Just as a brief statement, we are in full support of the city's staff's report and recommendation. As Joshua noted, the road serves no additional parcels. Design LLC owns the abutting property on both sides of the road. By allowing this vacation and lot consolidation, it will allow for a better design development, providing access to the existing structure at, on Steelhead Way, and alleviating some of the traffic congestion that currently is occurring there. We're here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the applicant? What is, I have one. What is directly west of the Columbia Road right-of-way that you would like to vaca, have vacated? Is that an electrical station?
That would be to the north, sir. It's a Northern Wasco County PUD substation, and they, we will continue to provide access to it through an easement through this property.
Okay.
Along with easements for the associated utilities.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify in favor of the proposed vacation for up to three minutes? If so, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing and hearing no one? Does anyone wish to testify in opposition to the proposed vacation for up to three minutes? If so, please state your name and address for the record and come forward. Hearing and seeing no one? Does anyone wish to testify or ask questions on this matter for up to three minutes that is not in favor or in opposition? If so, please state your name and address for the record, come forward. Hearing and seeing no one? Does the City Council feel they have enough information to make a decision?
Yes.
If so, the public hearing is now closed. Is the council ready for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Special Ordinance Number 25-607, which approves the petition for public right-of-way vacation application number 76-25, to vacate a portion of the public right-of-way near the intersection of Columbia Road and Steelhead Way, based upon the findings of fact and conclusions of law set forth in the Agenda Staff Report, by title only, as presented.
Is there a second?
I will second.
It's been moved by Counselor Randall and seconded by Counselor Ring to adopt this Special Ordinance, which approves public right-of-way vacation near the intersection of Columbia Road and Steelhead Way. Is there any more discussion? Oh, we have- Oh, we have... By title only, okay. Is there anybody that would like to have the city clerk read the entire ordinance in its entirety?
No.
Okay, would the city clerk please read the ordinance by title only?
Special Ordinance Number 25-607, a special ordinance vacating a portion of public right-of-way near the intersection of Columbia Road and Steelhead Way.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion and in favor of having it read by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Chandler.
Thank you.
Item 11A. Excuse me, 11... 11B. Nope, 11A. It's consideration of an ordinance accepting real property located near the intersection of West Second and Snipes. Is our city attorney? Our city attorney will be handling this from the staff? Please, please proceed.
Thank you very much, Mayor Mays. I think I'm co-presenting this with our Public Works Director, Dale, if he's in attendance tonight. And I'm sorry that I'm not physically there in person. I'm half a week now later reporting from my home, and so I appreciate your flexibility on that. And I'll try to, unfortunately, I'll be talking a little bit slower. Maybe that's a good thing. So, in 2021, one of the biggest projects that I've worked on in my time here in the city was the infrastructure agreement between the city and Design LLC and Moraine Industries LLC, also known as Google, concerning, among other things, eight Google-engineered, permitted, and constructed utility infrastructure projects to serve its data center. At the time when we entered into that agreement, the best-case estimates for the total cost of those projects that were completely borne by Google was $28.5 million. And so, this special ordinance considers the city accepting title to some real property where four of these projects are located, which was contemplated during that infrastructure agreement. And upon its adoption, the city will have successfully completed the terms of this agreement. So it's been a, it would be a terrific achievement for our staff and our Public Works Department specifically. And so, we wanted to use this opportunity to give the council an update on this agreement and its performance. And so I took some time and put together this chart at the bottom of the first page of the staff report, going over the eight projects that Google agreed to undertake, as well as their costs and status. And so, as I mentioned, upon this ordinance's adoption, projects two, three, four, and five will officially be completed. As part of its obligations under project two and three, Google, I think two years ago, or maybe a year and a half ago, conveyed certain water rights to the city as well for the city to incorporate into our municipal water system. And if the Public Works Director is there, he can definitely speak on some of the substance of projects two, three, four, and five, but very brief summaries are included in your staff report. All of those projects come with one-year warranties from Google against defects. And so, this special ordinance, again, is for the city to accept a 4.5-acre parcel of property, real property located in the industrial area near these data centers. And the total property value with all of the design-construted improvements, or the Google constructed improvements, is about $19.6 million, to which I secured an Altus Standard insurance policy per title, and the premium is about $28,000, and all of that was paid for by Google. And so, the Public Works Director can also speak to some of the anticipated budget implications associated with the city's ownership of this real property. And the real property itself, again, houses the four projects that Google undertook consistently with the terms of our infrastructure agreement. So I haven't seen the camera pan over. I don't know if our Public Works Director is there.
Yeah, he's here. Is anything you'd like to add, Dale?
There, that's on.
Yeah, is there anything you'd like to add?
Not really, other than, you know, we've been out there performing inspections as every one of these facilities has been being constructed for the last couple of years. And particularly, our Water Distribution Manager, Jerry Anderson, has been out there and played a key role in making sure that everything is kind of being installed and operating for him and his crews for us to be able to take over and own them and maintain them and operate them from here on. And right now, we're, we just, last week, had a walkthrough with Crestline Construction, who's been doing the construction, also MFA, who was the design engineer, and also a couple members from the Google team. And we had a final walkthrough for generating the final punch list to get everything wrapped up and completed. It's anticipated that we should be able to take over complete ownership of all the facilities. The goal was to be about the first of July. And that would then begin the one-year warranty period for all the infrastructure improvements out there. So there's two wells. One of them's the ASR well, and then the other one's just a regular well. We have the booster pump station. We have a surge tank. And we also have two 1.25 million-gallon reservoirs out there on the site. And if you've drive by Second Street and look over there to the east, you can see it, and it's quite an impressive site. And so it's going to be a huge, huge addition to our water distribution system, and we're anxiously waiting for it to come online. So that's really about all I have to add right now.
Any questions for the staff?
I have one.
Counselor McLaughlin?
What's an ASR well?
It's the Aquifer recharge system supply.
That's where we're...
That's where we're going to be infusing water downhole into the Aquifer for storage and then being able to recover it at different months.
The other is a standard well that fills from groundwater.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Runyon.
Kind of a question, maybe more of a statement, but as we all go around the community, we're often asked things like, you know, what does Google do for the community and so forth? And they have a long list, actually. And this is a big one right here. Basically donating two wells that provided more water, from what I understand, than they could actually use there. But they're not only donating those wells, they paid for all the infrastructure to make the city able to put it into the books, so to speak. And then we get to sell the water back to them that they use. So it's kind of a cool thing. You know, that's something that needs to be reported. So I appreciate it. Do I have that correct?
Yes.
In a very basic way? I mean, they put in the pump stations, the lift stations, the force main, the Commodore, I guess it's called, corridor access. I mean, two wells out there, and it's a real value for this community for years and years to come.
Exactly. Yeah, it's...
That's all I wanted to ask.
Going up on that, you mentioned two reservoirs?
Yeah, there's two. One and a 1.25 million-gallon steel reservoirs out there on the site.
Wow.
There's only one listed that I can, maybe I'm blind. Number four.
There's two. If you read the District Upper Project Four, there's two separate 1.25 million-gallon ASRs.
So number four includes two storage tanks?
Yeah.
Okay.
I remember a lone pine reservoir that a water line was run through town out to the industrial site. Is that part of this included in this? Does that ring a bell? Lone pine reservoir? Maybe I'm mistaken then.
No.
It was a lone pine well. What was it?
And that's all clear on the east end of the community.
I thought somehow that was connected.
Well, again, following up on what Counselor Runyon was saying, so we're getting a water main, we're getting two wells, two storage tanks, a water pump station, a lift station for sewage, a force main, I should say, and a utility corridor, water rights. And we're also getting redundancy on the, that's going to help the rest of our water system other than just the port area. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, it'll be able to be serving basically the 310 zone, and, you know, which is not just the industrial area. It's clear to downtown even.
Yeah, and all for, looks like the actual cost of this is not going to be $28.5 million, which is what we thought it's going to be, $24.82 million, which is all paid by Google.
Correct.
Great. Any other questions?
I'd just add a comment on top of what Counselor Runyon said about the issue of Google providing us added capacity to our system. It's a timely action item, because we have two of our wells currently down for maintenance, if I'm not mistaken.
And I'll clarify, maintenance and repair.
Maintenance and repair, here we go. So to have this additional capacity gives us that flexibility, so.
Anybody else?
No.
Anybody like to make a motion?
Title only.
Sorry.
All right.
Does anybody want to have Amy read this thing in its entirety?
I'm contemplating.
I have a question on that. When the city clerk reads the motion, do we need to read it again or just to say, "I move to approve"? Seems redundant that we keep doing that.
The answer is the first one, because that's what I've been doing.
Your motion language says as presented by title.
Okay.
Hear me? Your motion language says as presented instead of the entire time.
Okay.
Okay. Nobody's made a motion yet, have they?
Gonna read it by title.
Only.
Special Ordinance Number 25-608, a special ordinance accepting title to real property located near the intersection of West Second Street and Snipes Street. That's not right, is it? Is that the one we're doing right now? This? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
11A. That's right.
I'll make a motion to approve.
The title only.
Do I have to say it all again? That's what I was asking.
I don't think so.
25-607, I make a motion to approve.
I'm sorry, it's 25-608.
Okay, Amy confused me. 25-608.
Got back from a route active vacation. Let the record show I was training. Training.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved by Counselor Runyon and seconded by Counselor Randall to adopt the special ordinance 25-608 as presented by title only. Is there any more discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 11B. Consideration of a resolution amending the city fee schedule. Mr. Kara?
Thank you, Mayor Mays. It's everybody's favorite time of the year. It is the fee schedule update time, although we've already had that once this year. I think I mentioned during the staff report back in January or February when this was initially updated, that we'd come back with sort of a mid-year update in light of some of the ordinances that we were adopting or proposing for adoption, including some new fees. And so, we wanted to take this opportunity right before the new fiscal year to address some of those. And going down the list, oh, by the way, I have to give my caveat every year when we do this, that I'm just the messenger. And so hopefully, the appropriate staff for each one of these departments that has changes is available and in the room to sort of address any specific questions that they might have. But starting up with the Finance Department, the proposed changes include renaming the animal license fee to the livestock permit fee, which is consistent with council's recent adoption of the animal ordinance, and a reminder that livestock permits are valid for three years, and accordingly, increasing the livestock permit fee from $25 to $75 to account for the city's additional administration time. Moving over to the Public Works Department, there is an increase proposed for super fees by 3%, changing the inside-city limits per unit per month number from $46.32 to $47.71, and for the outside-of-the-city limits per unit per month from $78.74 to $81.10. I know Dale is there, but to answer any, you know, specific questions, but in summary, the city just completed an update to our Water Master Plan, which I think everybody here knows resulted in an increase to our water rates for the first time in about 10 years. And so similarly, we're embarking on a wastewater master plan update and are anticipating a similar recommendation to increase those rates to reflect that plan to ensure that the city can execute that plan as planned. And so this proposed increase is intended to mitigate that higher potential rate increase down the line, which is some sentiment that I believe council expressed at the time when we updated our water rates. And so it's a minimal adjustment just tending to the city's increased costs. And this specific fee, aside from the rest of them, so this entire update to the fee schedule is proposed to take effect, I believe, tomorrow. But this specific fee would not take effect until July 1st. A change from our Community Development Department's fees is just a clarification in the actual schedule itself. There's no new fee there. Just a clarification to assist the public and staff in addressing some Oregon law requirements for maximum fees that are allowed in certain cases. And then finally, in the administration section of our fee schedule, and this is consistent with the city council's last meeting, last week, when they adopted the new Chapter 5.03. And so, sort of overhauling and reworking the existing permit structure for Lewis and Clark Festival Park and changing that generally from, well, specifically from Lewis and Clark just to recreational properties. And so there's a detailed list, and it's all right there on this final page or the penultimate page of the staff report. And I can go down this specifically if people would like to hear me talk, but I think you can all see it for yourselves. And then the last bullet point there is discussing the procurement protest fee And then the last bullet point there is discussing the procurement protest fee of a, of a thousand dollars, which is a big number, but that fee is actually a function of our local contract review board rules. Council might remember the city updated those rules in 2023, and in those rules, there is a provision that addresses, you know, how can somebody file a protest to a city procurement? And in that section, it indicates that there's a fee associated with it, so it's part of the process of filing a protest. While we haven't had any protests, knock on wood, the proposed fee is required as part of our rules, and those are adopted consistent with Oregon law. And so the purpose of this fee here is to address some of the administrative costs that are associated with responding to procurement protests, which will honestly always involve quite a bit of the city manager, city attorney, and department manager, whoever they are in the case of the procurement. It will definitely involve a lot of our time. And so that those costs are intended to recoup some of the administrative overhead associated with such protests. And so it wouldn't be a fee schedule update if I didn't remind the mayor that because there were some new fees happening here and some additional fees, and the ways in which fees are calculated, it would be very appropriate to solicit public input before any motions are made or adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, before the council weighs in, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this particular item? Anybody? Okay, hearing and seeing no one, is the city council, have any questions for the staff?
One quick question, Mr. Mayor.
Council Ring.
Because I'm curious if anyone recalls, so with the water master plan, we raised rates for the first time in 10 years, but when's the last time the sewer rate was adjusted? Does anyone recall? Yeah.
Same period of time.
That's what I, okay, thanks, that's what I thought.
Council Runyon?
Is this the open time? You've already gone to the audience and everything, or, okay. Well, first of all, very commendable that the inside the city limits per unit sewer fee only went up a dollar and 34 cents, holy moly, and the outside city limits per unit, $2.36. Woo-hoo, that's great. Now let's get on to the important stuff. The, just to be clear, the livestock fee that goes from 25 to 75, is that? Now we're talking livestock, not chickens, right? We have that definition, I think, finally hashed out in a couple hour long meeting. Poultry is a whole different thing. Is that per horse if they have two horses? So is it 150 at that point, or two cows or two goats?
It's per species.
Is it per item?
No, it's per species. If you have five horses, it would be the same price.
Whatever it would be, okay. All right, just wanted to put that out there, thank you.
Any other questions for the staff?
Jonathan, did you have a comment about poultry and livestock, that clarification?
Did I have a comment?
Oh, I thought, yeah, sorry, I thought I, never mind.
I can, I can, I'm pulling up the code right now and I can, I can just remind council of the distinction if that's helpful. I didn't have a comment on it though, but I'm pulling it up now. And the definition of. I'm sorry, it's, it's actually not reflected on our website. Give me one second, I'll have to pull it up a different way.
While Jonathan's looking that up, does anybody else have any questions?
No.
Very important though, because if somebody has 12 chickens, all of a sudden, and it's included in the livestock definition, it shouldn't be.
Okay, let's see. So the definition section of our newly adopted chapter 5.03, which doesn't, I don't believe takes effect until July 1st, which sort of explains why it's not reflected on our website yet. We define household pets as, as the typical household pets, cats, dogs, hamsters, et cetera. Livestock exclusively means domesticated goats, sheep, alpaca, llamas, members of the family, equine, and poultry, and other domesticated animals determined by the chief of police as appropriate to allow the city's corporate limits without form to animal or public health, safety, or welfare. And we define poultry to exclusively meaning domesticated chickens, ducks, yeast, and quail. So I believe, just to sort of touch base with Council Runyon, the definition of livestock includes poultry.
And in my view, it should not. Poultry is an entirely different species.
So it's, it's, it's covered under the poultry category within the livestock ordinance. And so if you have chickens, like 12 chickens, or eight chickens, or one chicken, you will need one permit for any amount of those chickens that comply.
Permit for any amount.
Species. So if I had, if I had two horses and 10 chickens, I need two permits, one for the horses and one for the chickens.
Two for the horses, one each, but just one for the chickens.
Based on species. So if there's two horses, it's one permit that covers the two horses?
Oh, okay, that's not what I, he said earlier, okay.
I think it's, I think just to affirm again, it's based on species, correct?
Are you asking me?
Yes, Jonathan.
That's what I understood.
Yes. That's correct.
Okay, let's just note those questions are out there. If you read it later and find out differently, I'd certainly like it brought back to council on behalf of our number of homes that have small chicken coops around our community, and there's many more than I ever thought there were.
One of the things that our city clerk and public information officer has been doing over the last few weeks, or maybe even months, is public, public awareness and education as to the new ordinance and its effective date and what they need to do to be in compliance.
And also on your explanation, if they had five horses, as Jonathan mentioned, it's one permit?
Correct.
Not five permits?
One permit per species.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to adopt resolution number 25-026, the resolution amending the city fee schedule effective June 10th, 2025 as presented.
McGlaughlin will second.
It's been moved by Councilor Ring and seconded by Councilor McGlaughlin to adopt this resolution, amending the city's fee schedule effective June 10th. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, I just want to clarify just one last time. I know I mentioned it during the staff report, but all of these fees, if this is adopted here tonight, would take effect, effective tomorrow, except for the increase of the sewer fees. Again, that's not intentionally, it is intentionally designed not to take effect until July 1st.
Okay, so duly noted. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
City Council, the city of the Dells will now meet in the executive session in accordance with ORS 192.6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. Representatives of the news media shall not be allowed to attend the executive session. No final decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to this room in open session and welcome the audience back into the room. We expect a return to open session, according to the city manager, in about 10 minutes. Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
164 megabytes.
To approve the memorandum agreement between the city of the Dalles and the Dalles Police Association, effective July 1st, 2025, and expiring December 31st, 2025.
McLaughlin will make the second.
Been moved by Council Ring and seconded by Council McLaughlin. Is there any, uh, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Any other business?